We'll have a moment of silent meditation and then pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should I still call the order or do you want to since?
No.
Call order, all three county commissioners are here. It's January 4th, 2023. It's 10 o'clock and we have a great group of individuals in the room and we'll be dealing with them in very near future. Okay, number three, election of county commission president.
I make a motion to, um, to elect Tom Bloom again for another year as president of county commission.
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. Um, I, I will just say that I will continue to work with the three of us because I believe our working relationship has really made a major difference in the economic improvement in the county and also for quality of life. So I thank you. It's a one-third county commission program, so I appreciate that. Consent and approval of county administrator?
Oh, you forgot. Rules of procedure.
Oh, apologize. See, I'm all so. Rules of procedure for the management of regular meetings of the Mon County Commission. We have to do that each year?
I move that we approve the rules as presented.
Second.
Proper move in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I did want to point out there's a couple small changes to the rules of procedure. Basically, we put in some clarifications in regards to, um, letters of support. As you recall, last year with all the grant applications that were occurring, that we were regularly being pulsed to submit letters of support. And we had voted earlier in the year to basically give the president the ability to poll the commission if they fell out of cycle, uh, to be able to approve those letters of support, uh, and then as long as they are listed on the next, next week's agenda. So that section says from time to time, the commission will be asked to submit letters of support for community organizations and/or municipalities that are applying for various grants, generally to be included as agenda item for the commission's regular public meeting requests that need to be received by Friday prior to the next week's meeting at noon. Due to time sense of nature, these requests, the commission has approved the president and orders doesn't need to poll the commission for approval to sign a letter outside the regular meeting process as long as the letter of support is noted under correspondence in the next regular public meeting. Uh, so there's that section that was added. In addition, we added a section regarding appointments to boards and authorities. Applications for participation by the public on the commission's various boards and authorities are accepted throughout the year and shall be noted as corresponds by the commission during the weekly meeting. The commission will address the request based on requirements and needs for the particular board and authority and will take action in the form of official appointment in a future meeting or notification otherwise within 30 to 45 days of receipt of the original request. So those are, everything else is the same except for.
Exactly.
Those two items.
So been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'd like to do number five, the consents and approvals first and then we'll move on.
We have 10 exonerations for $5,554.64, minutes for December 28th, 2022. Vouchers, general county fund, $529,022.94. General school, 220,267,02911, 61998. Chestnut Ridge Park, 2,076075. Camp Muffley, 1,0068054. Mason Dixon Park, 23757. Assessment valuation, 1,0052612. Purchasing card vouchers, general county, $4,069.42. Camp Muffley, 70655. Mason Dixon Park, 16221. For a voucher total of $761,053.10. No budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for January 4th, 2023.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
At this time, without objection, I would request that I can move the agenda around to have reports from elected officials. I know several of you have to leave to go for an 11 o'clock meeting, but if you want to come on up and explain why you're here and why others are here for you.
Okay. I'm magistrate Bane, um, from Division One. Every year, what I had promised when I was selected that I'd bring to the county commission an annual report. This report, I haven't, I gave it to you in front of you. What it does is, it's not exactly the UJA, which is the official numbers from the state of West Virginia. What I do is I take it right from my docket. The docket numbers will be different, so this is like physical touches that I have every day. So if you look at the first page there, um, we're down a little bit. I had 294 felonies. Uh, we're down to about 25% on that. When I say plea downs, that means it goes from a felony to a misdemeanor. I had 48 of those last year. It was down 4%. The misdemeanors were about the same. It was almost on, right on it. Uh, I had 1,275 misdemeanors. That's .39% difference, but the ones that increased were the civils. Uh, was up almost 4% on the civils at 436. On the tickets, we had 318. That's almost 3% increase. So for a total of 2,371 cases last year for one magistrate. And the reason why I like to illustrate that is for you is because, uh, yes, it is a decrease of almost 4%. And I might've taken maybe a couple extra vacation days or something. I don't know. I normally work a whole, I, you know, we easily get so many weeks and I don't use them all, but I will tell you, there's some other graphs in there. You can look at the comparisons from last year. I want, I want to give credit to my, to my campaign, uh, my manager, which is Wes Nugent. He put this together for me and he does a great job for me and I, I thank him so much. Before we go into the next thing, I want to thank the delegates and also the senators, the senators and delegates that were here that took their time to come. Thank you very much. Uh, this is very important to the citizens of, of Montague County and I know they have to get to a meeting, so I'm going to get right to the bill. Um, the bill is requesting a, a, uh, a fifth magistrate for Montague County. In past, um, they've said that we needed two and they've never done anything about it. My concerns are, is that if we don't put a bill in place, then we're not saying that we're still interested and want it. And what I'm asking from the county commission today is to, a letter of support to help these delegates and senators to give them something that they can give to, um, the, you know, the chairmans of these committees and also, uh, work with the speaker of the House and also the president of the Senate. So if you could draft a letter for me of support, this would increase our ability to make our docket 20% more efficient. And what that does is it not only helps prosecution, but it helps the defendants to have more time to actually plead their cases. There are days that I have 15 minutes between cases and it's difficult. Okay? And we get behind and people get frustrated. We have to do continuances and, and this is not the way that I think we should be efficient in our way of, uh, part of the government that we have. So if we could and if I could get that from you, that would be really appreciated. And again, I can't say enough for the people that have come. I know that you guys have something with the university today, but, um, you can see here that we have delegates here that are interested in this and I consider this kind of low hanging fruit for us. So this could be a victory for Montague County that we've been looking forward to. So the little trivia, so I'll finish with this, is that the last county that ever lost a magistrate was Montague County. Montague County lost a magistrate in 2001 to Mercer County. Mercer County got a fifth magistrate and we went down to four. Uh, but our numbers are still increasing. I didn't get to get with Wes on this, but we just looked at the 2021 numbers that came out recently and we went up from, uh, 60, a little, almost a little less than 6,400. We're over 6,500 for 2021. So the 2022 numbers have not come out yet. So I just, that's what I wanted to give the presentation on. If you have any questions for me, I can answer those, uh, right now, um, and I'll just open it up for that.
No, I, I would ask that we director administrator put it on the gen, on our work session agendas for consideration for posting in a future meeting so that we can take care of that next week.
Okay, all three, yes. And while you're still here, is there someone else you want to introduce? I mean, we have from, I'm very impressed who, who came today and I'm very appreciative. I mean, and we even have our, out of retirement.
Yeah. I have Judge Kajose that just retired. I appreciate his support for coming here. We've got Joe, we've got Charlie.
Senator.
We've got Debbie, we've got Gino.
Welcome, new delegates. We really appreciate you being here.
I really appreciate all that's here. So I, I mean, they come along the way. I know they have another meeting and I just don't want to hold them up, but if any of you guys want to say anything, you can.
Yeah.
But I just really appreciate the time. Tom, I thank you so much.
Sure.
I called the other day and I asked to be on this because I, actually I have a court hearing at 10:30 that I have to go to. I moved my docket around just so that I could come up here and talk to you. So, um, any, any other questions or anything?
I think the difference is now that I think that to be proactive.
Right.
Is more important than reactive. And I think all three of us agree with you and if, and one of the things we would love to see is that everyone is working together and that's something that we need when we go back down to Charleston side. Thank you.
Right.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Your honor?
Thanks magistrate Bane.
Yes.
Commissioners, uh, thank you for allowing me to, uh, appear before you today. And I would just like to piggyback on what Ron has, uh, expressed today. First, I think he needs a lot of credit for pushing for this because the situation in magistrate court is desperate. We have to have another magistrate. There's no, there's no option. They're working day and night over there and, um, they have little time between hearings and, and the bottom line, the result of this is justice can't be provided if you don't have time to administer justice. And they're working their fingers to the bone. So, um, it's desperate. Joe, we need your help. Senator Charles, commissioners, we need your help. It has to happen. If it doesn't, then, uh, shame on us. We're not getting it done. Secondly, uh, I am retired now, although this does feel like, uh, Groundhog Day. Perry Christopher, uh, hasn't been sworn in, so the Supreme Court has, um, ordered that I continue until she is. So, and I'm also on the senior status, so there will be times when I appear as judge. It's been a pleasure representing this county and I want to thank the commission for the cooperation, uh, that you've given the, the circuit court and the judiciary. This connection is important. We have to have, um, this cooperation and we thank you for this beautiful building that we have. It's not for the judges. The judges benefit, but it's really for the public. And what a great facility, uh, that you've provided. So I thank you and I wish you all a happy new year.
Thank you very much, your honor.
Your honor, if I may, one, oh, sorry. One question for you. We discussing earlier, you were advocating for a, another magistrate. There's also been some talk about the need for another circuit judge.
Well, there is.
If you had a minute, if you wouldn't mind commenting on that, I think it'd be helpful.
Well, I can.
Oh, you can't because you're still sitting?
We just, um, we just got our numbers.
Okay.
And we're, and the numbers are confidential at the moment.
Okay.
And we're having a meeting, uh, later today with all of the, the judges and the Supreme Court to discuss, um, where the need is for an additional judge. Uh, we are busy. I schedule hearings every half hour. So, um, it's, um, it's a busy court here in Montague County, both magistrate, family court and circuit court.
Okay.
Again, man, thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Good morning and thank you for moving us around. We do have a little bit busy schedule, as you know, next week we'll go into session. So we've been requested to be at certain places this week in a certain time. I will just update you a little bit. I kind of dropped the ball last, I didn't kind of drop, I did drop the ball last year when we gave an additional magistrate to Berkeley. I should have amended that bill to have put one in for Montague County because we talked all throughout the process of the bill and that's what it came down to, that we needed it just as badly as Berkeley County needed one. And I didn't amend that bill at the time. I will tell you that this legislature, every 10 years can look at the makeup of the court system across the state and make recommendations on what the changes need to be. This year, the Supreme Court has been working on that and I have talked to them a few times about it. I've talked to them about the need for another judge and also for the magistrate. So they are keenly aware of, you know, at least where I feel that we should be. And that's not only me. Everything I do, I work with the other delegates and, and especially Senator Clements that represents the area. I do have a bill that's in drafting. It has not come up yet as of yesterday, uh, for the magistrate at least. I've worked with Wes and Ron throughout the, the year. We've been in pretty close contact and I keep relaying that message to the speaker and how important this is. So hopefully we'll have good resolve. It will certainly help when you guys give some, uh, push to it also that it is a need. So with that, I thank you guys for even taking us up and allowing to be moved around our schedule. We hate to ask for anything special, but we've got other meetings to attend to, so thank you.
We understand.
Thank you, delegates.
Senator? Congratulations on your victory. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to be here, uh, and I'm happy to see you've done your homework to get all of this, these numbers put together because when you go in with the right ammunition, you all, you can very often win the battle. I look at the list in there of the other counties that had more magistrates or at least five magistrates and things. And like I've said before, Mon County is a rising star in the state of West Virginia and it needs the attention that we should give it. And I will do what I can. I will introduce this bill on the Senate side and maybe they can run concurrently and that way we can possibly get things done. But I think it's necessary for this county because it's growing and there's no sign of letting up on the growth and I think that's wonderful. And again, thank those that did the good work to give us the ammunition that we need to fight this battle. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Welcome.
Hey there. Good morning, Todd Kajo. Let it be known too, that when we come from the place where we have four magistrates in need of one, our numbers speak for themselves and there is a need for two. And to add to the, uh, difficulty this year for health reasons, Sandy Hope has been out for 90% of the year. So we've been working from a basis of three in need of six. Okay? We do more in a morning than the vast majority do in a week when you're talking about protective orders and safety orders and signing warrants, having hearings. It's nonstop. Mr. Bane spoke about having 15 minutes in between proceedings. I have zero and they overlap and we're hours late and we're trying to do teams and do video arraignments. Everybody's sending in, you know, investigative complaints because Morgantown, what are they doing in Morgantown? We've been waiting for them for hours. Okay? So it affects everybody and it affects the staff. The volume of work that I alone put out is prolific and my assistant does it all. So it affects everybody. And, um, so when Ron speaks about the need for a magistrate, it's code red right now. We're bleeding. Like I work so hard, I feel sick, literally. It's not sustainable. So there's a need for two and there's a need for one immediately. There was a need for one last year, two years ago, and, uh, it's not sustainable in any capacity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have two newly elected delegate members. Would either of you want to come in front or say hello? Did you look at each other?
I'll be on the spot here.
Yeah.
I didn't really plan on saying anything. I just was informed of the, the dire need for another magistrate, so I came here to express my support for that. Wes has kept me in the loop on this. Delegate Statler has also, um, mentioned the need for this and magistrate Bane has mentioned this to me as well. So I'm here to express my support for that and I plan on absolutely supporting them in Charleston as well. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Congratulations on your election.
Thank you. Philip Warner, you want to, we'll put you on the spot. Make your first official.
I just want to let you know that I plan to support this. I do see the growth as a real tour in Morgan, in Montague County and, uh, I think this is, this is a good thing and we'll try to get it through. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Congratulations on your election.
One quick question. Was there not a study done by the state and then they delayed it, but it said we were not actually one or two? I think it was three.
Well, okay, the first study was done back in 2014, which I have that study, which is a really cumbersome thing. They didn't do much with it. They looked at it. There is a study right now, and I know that Judge Kajo said that too. There are not, that study was not only for magistrate court, but also for the entire court system and that's what they're talking about today. That has not been released yet. Indicate, you know, there's some indications there, but I, I don't, I don't know the, the, what's in that right now and the legislation will take that up. And that's why it's important, I think, for us, and I'm glad they're here because we're going to at least put this bill in and let them know that we want one. If the bill doesn't happen to go anywhere and they do a realignment in some other way, that's fine, but at the end of the day, I want to make sure that we've got, like you said, a united for, for a force then pushing this forward so that we can get at least one. If we get two, we get two, but I, I just don't want to not get at least one.
Thank you. Either of you want to?
No, I think we.
Thank you.
Thank you. We know, so if you want to get, oh wait, uh, come on up.
Where they leave?
Yes.
Okay.
Please come on in. We have Granville, along.
This is perfect for me.
Oh, okay.
It's going to save me some phone calls.
Thank you.
Patty Lewis, mayor from the town of Granville. And I just wanted to, um, give the commission a heads up and I was going to get in contact with the delegates, so I'm certainly glad they're here. There's discussion again about eliminating BNO tax, um, in this legislative session. So I have been in contact with John Williams. I actually emailed him our budget to show him what effect that would have on the town of Granville. I can't speak for Westover, I can't speak for Morgantown, Blacksville, Star City, but BNO tax is about 49.7% of our budget. We spend 55% of our budget just on public service. I'm talking police, fire, street departments. So you can see what an impact that that would be for us to provide services, um, to our citizens. I think that if, if they don't come up with some mechanism to recoup that money immediately, it's going to be devastating. There's going to be a domino effect for Montague County because if we can't provide services, if the other municipalities can't provide services, they're going to come to the county commission and say, we deserve these services. So, um, please do that consideration, delegates, please, um, in Charleston when you talk about eliminating BNO tax. We have to have some source of immediate income, whether you pass it statewide for state, um, you know, increase in, um, consumer tax or whatever, but you can't leave all these cities and municipalities just hung out to dry. But I have a statement.
Sure.
From the municipal league that they were going to present. And we're trying to be proactive so that we can get this message out before they, um, draw off some kind of legislation. So, thank you.
And hopefully you can bring that up tomorrow. I believe MAP is having a meeting at 10 o'clock with the legislators.
Oh, okay.
Across the street at the.
Across the street.
Actually, it's meant for all municipal leaders, the commission and the legislator.
Okay. We'll see if we can get somebody there.
That would be great.
10 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay. I know you all have to leave, go to another meeting. We appreciate, we look forward to seeing you very soon, maybe tomorrow. Thank you, in case you have to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. That, we really appreciate you coming. It's very important.
Thank you, sir.
And we're, the, following, the, following one, uh, short, it was recent of 1,000.
I'll, I'll call you. I'll call you, Zep.
Okay, well, I'll call you.
Sure.
It's been such, it's been an issue for way too long. I don't know if I need to come up with more water.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call you. I'll pull the file and see.
Thanks for this.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Hey, Tom. We're just, uh, leaders, is there any other, you want to check to see if there are any others here?
Yes. Are there any other elected leaders before we go back to the agenda that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to get back to introduction of new employees, personnel changes. Donna Hida, circuit clerk, has someone to present to us. It was a good time you were here. You got to see.
It worked out really well. Thank you.
It worked out very well.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi.
All the representatives.
Hey.
This is my first official hire as circuit clerk, so I'm pretty excited. This is April Davies Varner. April worked in the county clerk's office with Renetta, actually, for 14 years?
19 years, six months.
So today is her first day as well and, uh, we're very excited to have her on board. So thank you very much for everything that you do for our office. If, if we can do anything for you, you know where we are, um, and you know, we'll be leaning on you a little bit, so, thanks very much.
I move that we approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome back, I should say.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your, uh, start of the year here as, as circuit clerk.
Thank you very much. Yesterday, I'm very impressed all the employees came back today and yesterday.
Give them time.
Yeah, give it, give it a couple weeks.
Yeah, I know. I figured by the end of the month I'll.
Yes, you'll, you'll be, yeah, they'll have voodoo dolls for you too. Chestnut Ridge Park, Lily Pingly and Nicholas Lannan.
It's both our seasonal, part-time.
Pay rate is $11 an hour for each. Looking for a start date, January 6th. January 6th are both our start dates.
Move that we approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do we have any other?
No.
Good. Okay. We'll move on to comments from the public. If you come before, state your name, um, your address and we'd appreciate you. Keep it to three to four minutes upon you. Thank you.
Mr. Oliverio, how are you?
Hello, good.
Good morning.
Frank Oliverio, 102 Maple Lane, Morgantown, West Spigot, Virginia. I'm here as, uh, president for Morgantown Hockey Association. I don't know if some of you saw the activities last night at city council, um, but Bow Park has made an unfortunate decision to shut down, um, the only hockey rink in, uh, north central west Virginia for 18 months in order to, for the life of me, honestly, I'm not quite sure what. It needs renovation, but I heard about a survey, study that was done in 2014 with magistrates. Apparently there's something about studies in 2014 that here in 2023, we're still talking about. There was a study done in 2014 that said this area needs a new sheet of ice. In fact, a new ice arena with two sheets of ice and that would help us develop the And that would help us develop the program. It would support all of the other activities, curling, figure skating, you name it. As Morgantown Hockey Association, we have over two hundred and fifty kids playing with us, and they actually come from fourteen counties, or twelve counties, excuse me. Four from north central, or six from north central West Virginia, four from southwestern Pennsylvania, because we're easier to get to, and two from western Maryland. We're also, and I will give Bow Park benefit, we are very affordable, very affordable for hockey, which is a very expensive sport. When you shut down our rink for eighteen months, you are going to detrimentally affect the children and the families that play hockey. And it's going to be threefold. First, the ones that can afford it will go to Pittsburgh, and they're probably not coming back. And even the ones that can afford it are going to spend much more. The ones that can't afford it, they're done. They cannot afford to go to Pittsburgh and spend three to four times as much just on registration, let alone gas money back and forth for two to three to four practices a week. Then you've got the idea that what are you going to do in eighteen months? Are you really going to think people are just going to pick up? This isn't basketball, football, baseball, with all respects to those sports. This is a, this is a skill-specific sport that only is accomplished by actual ice time of skates on ice. It, it is what it is. I, I can, I, you know, there's a story about the Manning boys, and they threw football in the backyard with their dad, and they didn't play organized football until high school. Okay? You can't do that with an ice rink. You, I can't have an ice rink in my backyard. I'd love to, but I can't. You own, you need ice. And, and what Morgantown Bow Park is doing is not good for the community. Now, as county commissioners, God bless you. I don't know how you can help us, but I'm, I'm going to tell you about the train that's coming that does affect the county commission. We were sold a bill of goods on levies. We were sold a bill of goods that this is going to happen. We were shown PowerPoint presentations and all of this stuff. And everybody's paying attention. So if you all want levies to be passed, you need to make sure that those that are in charge of the levies actually follow through with what they're promising. And what they promised us and what they're delivering is two completely different things. And I, I, my phone is getting blown up with parents that are basically saying, I don't care what it is. I'm never supporting another levy again. I'm never supporting this stuff. This is incompetence run amok. And that's not you three, but, but that's the problem here. And that's the problem when you have what has happened last night, when you have children and children come up and say, please don't take away my sport, and parents come up and say, let's work together. And you guys know me. We, my family's worked in this town and worked with county officials and state officials for years. I want to work with people. And on some of this stuff, I actually have a skill set, or my parents have a skill set. And we have been blocked out at every turn to help. We, we could get a rink. We know how to do rinks. We know how to get them affordable. We know contractors. Never, never involved. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't exactly know how to wrap this up other than you guys, whatever you can do, however you can do to help, help. I've reached out to the auditor because I've got the levy language. It doesn't say anything about you've got to keep these wood beams. Like, like that's the stuff we get from the city that you're just confused by, wait, what? What? So I don't understand, and maybe you guys can explain it or explain it to anybody else, how the mayor can sit on the Board of Park and Recreation, the assistant mayor can be the president of Bow Park, and they get to sit up in those chairs last night and say, I don't know what, I have no control over Bow Park. So I got an MPA. I got a law degree. I'd love for somebody to explain to me how that happens. So with that, I think I voiced enough disapproval and anger from two hundred and fifty-plus parents that were very respectful and very kind and very open to work together last night. And I'm afraid that we're starting to lose some of that momentum. And I don't want to see that happen to our town because I love it and I know that when we work together, we can accomplish amazing things. And that's what I'm still trying to make sure that we are able to do. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Oliverio.
Thanks, Frank.
Someone else would like, Jamie? Mr. Summerlin. Summerlin.
Good morning, commissioners. Jamie Summerlin, two oh nine Kingwood Street. As Frank had said, I'm not sure if any of you happened to see the council meeting last night or even heard about it. But if you listened to the radio, opened the paper this morning, some great coverage, by the way, to the newspaper guys. I encourage you to go watch it. The big. Sorry.
Donna, is she going to stay for the proclamation?
Oh, yeah. Hold on.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
All right. I'm sorry, Jamie.
I'll wrap this.
Sorry. No, 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 no.
No, no.
No, that's.
Okay. Well, the big topic, obviously, last night was the ice rink, amongst other things they do in executive session. But I'm not here to discuss the issues that were brought forth last night. I'm just happy to highlight the most important speakers, I think, that we had, and that was the kids. There were kids from ages of six to teenagers to students at WVU that spoke. The thing that impressed me the most was the kids were disciplined. They were respectful. They just wanted to make sure that they were heard. It should have, and I know seeing the parents sitting there with them, it did make them very proud. It made their coaches proud, and it made their teammates proud, and it gave their teammates the courage to come up and speak at the same time as well. I know that the levy that was passed is a county levy, not a city levy. And I would request that as this moves forward, that everyone involved go into this decision with the thinking that one solution is not the only solution and be open to ideas and suggestions that may, heaven forbid, come from outside the walls of the city, the county, and even the state. A lot of the events that I do and get involved in, we're always looking at opportunities to learn from other events, other organizations that are doing similar things, or just thinking outside the box, not just from here in the state, but from around our neighboring states and around the country as well, bringing new and unique ideas to the Morgantown area. My recommendation is that they bring all stakeholders to the table. Bow Park, the city, who actually controls the bonds, the county, County Parks, Mylan Park, WVU, the CBB, Hockey Association representatives, as Frank was here a little while ago, and more of the coaches and people that spoke last night, talking about the jobs that are going to be lost when this closes, the opportunity for people to continue to build the relationships, those kids talking about the other kids that are like family to them. And knowing that, as we've had another athletic facility close here recently that my son attended and was there frequently with a lot of his friends with Gridstone, they've lost that connection themselves. And so now they're going to Pittsburgh, and now they're going to other places to climb and do other things that they should be doing right here in our backyard. Now, that's not a city or county issue. That's a private entity. I understand that. But what it does is it removes something that is a family, and it removes something that they have unique here in their own backyards. And my, my encouragement is that everyone who has a stake in this process be willing and open to coming to the table to have a conversation and, and not worry about who gets the credit, not worry about who is the one that has the voice about the issue, but think about how can we make this better for the community of Morgantown, the county, and quite honestly, the state as a whole? Because this could be a tourism driver. This could be something that drives people to the area and to the region and not only benefits those families and those kids that are growing up in a sport that teaches them discipline and teaches them the, the family relationships and, and the courage that they had last night to get up here and speak. But it also benefits all the businesses that are around our area as well, the restaurants that get filled up, the hotels that get filled up. There's a lot that this impacts. And as they stated last night, when you take something away that they have no other opportunity to do in a way that Bow Park does provide affordability for them, it's going to be very hard to get those kids back into those programs. They're going to find other things to do. And unfortunately, what we're seeing is they're finding other things to do away from the area, and that's just going to draw them away from here. Coach Maisy spoke last night. We lose our best talent in the area because they go out of state, because we don't have the facilities. I know they want a new facility. Well, that's fine. Let's make it one that everybody can work together on and agree upon and make sure that it's something that delivers, not just in the immediate future, but look at it from a five, ten, twenty-year perspective. What's going to make the greatest impact on Morgantown as a whole in, as we move forward with this? So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamie.
Good morning, Frank. I'm so happy that Frank came because he voiced it eloquently. I talked to Frank this morning. I said, Frank, you really need to come. He was hesitant because he wasn't sure, you know, was this the proper place to be? Well, here's the deal. This is the proper place to be. Because here's why.
Could you just state the name for the record? So.
Sure. My name is James.
We know who it is, but.
My name, my name. Since you're, since you're going to make me do that, okay, I'm going to be ungloriously say, tell you that my name is James Giuliani. I live two five six Prairie Avenue. National landmark, historic Wade House. And I'm also running now for the city council in Morgantown to make change, positive change. And I'll be attending every meeting of this commission, at least three a month. Every week that the city has one, I will attend this meeting. And what I'm suggesting is that we need to have a voice to the county commission. I don't mean a voice in the sense that, you know, we're telling you anything to do. A voice is that we communicate, that we have this relationship, these relationships that we're talking about. This is, we have to talk about relationships. Many of the parents that came in last night, and we're talking about hockey now, and we're talking about the levy, and we're talking about the ice rink. That's what we're talking about. So I'm, that's where I'm at. So I attended that meeting last night. Jamie did too. He spoke eloquently about it. Coach Maisy was there. He came up and he said, I didn't plan to talk. But he said, you know, I had to. He said, because this is about the kids, our futures and things. Now, what we talk about is safety. And I'm going to bring just a little thing in that you guys as a commission had to do that's certainly not the same, but somewhat. You all have made a decision about Chestnut Ridge as far as you said, the safety of the slopes, something about your lifts or something, and you, your best intentions, okay? Well, the fact of the matter here is this, is just as simple as this, okay? Nobody's asking, everybody wants the new ice rink. But guess what? We want the ice rink that we need, that can do the things that Jamie can tell you that it needs because this is what he does, okay? But also that Coach Maisy can tell you, that also Frank Olivero can tell you as a parent and, and a person involved and have loved, learned to love hockey from. I heard about these different people and things like that. So what we're talking about is our children's safety, okay? They said if you close this rink for this period of time, you're worried about a broken leg, a broken arm. We can see those things. Can we see what we're going to be doing to our children? Have we closed the ice rink down for eighteen months? Do I have the exact solutions? No, I'm not the, the expert in that by any means. But I can be the messenger to say, as a community, we all have to work as a community because I've been coming to this commission for years, for years, to this community for years. WVU parents were there. Many WVU parents, they spoke expertly about, about, about conditions in children. There was a Difinbok, Professor Difinbok. She spoke to it as an expert in the field. So what I'm suggesting, I'm maybe sort of rambling now and I don't want to, but the fact of the matter, no, because the fact of the matter is this is really important. What we hit on is certain things. Frank hit it. Frank hit it. We're not just Morgantown. Morgantown reflects on Mon County. And I understand, nobody ever referred to Mon County for years. West Virginia University was in Morgantown, West Virginia. Morgantown, West Virginia. Now we start hearing things about Granville, West Virginia, the baseball fields in, and those are all good things. I understand, those are all positive things. But the fact of the matter is, we are still West Virginia University in Morgantown, West Virginia. And unless we bring West Virginia University into this discussion, we need to bring the Board of Education into this discussion. And here's what I'd like to hear more certainly and sooner than, much sooner than later. There's an architect that's totally involved in this project. There's an architect, I believe it's the Mills Group, okay? Mr. Mills works with a lot of organizations, so I'm very, I'm sure he'd be receptive to come and speak to this. Because what the folks are asking for is saying, let it stay open. Let us figure out what we need to do, but let's keep hockey in Morgantown because if we close this, this ice arena that we have right now, we may lose that in Morgantown, West Virginia. And we can't afford to do that. And Mon County and the surrounding area and the state, as they all said. Thank you for giving me the time that you did. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Is there anyone else? Sure. Come on in there.
My name's Todd Stanbrook. I didn't actually plan on coming to speak. I was supporting the extra magistrate. But I'm, I'm going to speak as a hockey parent. My son is eight years old. This is his fourth year of hockey. His first three years were just local hockey. You know, you go in, you practice, you learn. This is his first year of travel hockey. And it's taking us all over Pennsylvania. We'll be at Virginia Beach in March, go to several different events. It's very costly. Roughly about four thousand so far is what it's going to cost me if I'm lucky for an eight-year-old to travel to play hockey. If this ice rink gets shut down, we've got more factors than what's already been spoken about. And everything that has been spoken about is great. But my son goes to practice six fifteen, gets done at seven fifteen. He's a goalie, so it takes a little longer to get him undressed. We're home by eight o'clock. He's eight years old. He has three practices a week. I only allow him to go to two because I want to make sure his studies are done. There's two nights a week. Those studies don't get done. Our education for these kids is going to suffer. If they got to travel to go to practice, to go to games, hockey parents are resilient, and we will do our best to make sure our kids are educated. But it's very difficult to do those things if we're even able to get the ice time elsewhere. But I think the problem stemmed with Bow Park. I've played at that rink since nineteen eighty. And I remember in nineteen eighty, getting up at six in the morning to go to practice at ten years old. And there was somebody there to turn that lock on that door and open that rink up at six o'clock in the morning for kids to come practice. And this was before they had walls. I mean, I was a goalie. So I'm going out on the rink at six in the morning with fog, three feet in the air over the ice. But there was always somebody there, and we always had practice. That doesn't happen anymore. No one cares at Bow Park about that facility. And if you look at it, you can tell. If you look at it over the years, you can tell. Nothing is being done with that levy money to improve that facility until something else comes up. Everything has been taken away. Every time you walk in that place, you can look and something else is gone. There's no place for people to sit to even put on skates that they rent to go public skating. There's no concession stand anymore. There's no one, well, with the exception of one, no one that works there that cares. There's no one, well, with the exception of one, no one that works there that cares. I don't even know if a hockey player even works there anymore. I mean, before, when I was a kid, that was who worked there. We had hockey players working there, firemen that worked there part-time, policemen that worked there part-time. It was, everyone who worked there cared about that facility. And Bow Park's leadership, it just seems to be nonexistent. We're asking for your all's help for multiple reasons. Our kids' education, our kids' hockey, someone to be in there that's going to be responsible for the facility and actually do what should be done, but we're asking for your help, and it's desperate. And these hockey parents don't go away. We never go away, so we're going to keep pushing. We will keep pushing, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stamber.
Is there anyone else going once? We will allow the county commission to respond during that report, okay? We'll move on. We have, we have the proclamation in honor of Montague County Circuit Clerk Jean Friend.
I have the proclamation here, and I'll go ahead and read it.
Okay.
Proclamation, in honor of Dorothy Jean Friend, upon her retirement from the office of Montague County Circuit Clerk. Whereas in 1959, Dorothy Jean Friend began her career with the Montague County Circuit Clerk's office. And whereas in 1962, after retirement of the current circuit clerk, Ms. Friend ran and won her first race as Montague County Circuit Clerk. And whereas during her 60-year tenure as an elected official, Ms. Friend had won 10 consecutive six-year terms, seen the inauguration of 12 presidents, 10 governors, and numerous county commissioners, and has witnessed many changes within the court systems, and includes the expansion of the Montague County Circuit Magistrate and Family Courts. And whereas, along with her dedicated and loyal staff, Ms. Friend has earned the respect of colleagues and court officers throughout the state. And whereas in her 60 years of employment, Ms. Friend has displayed the highest example of character, ethics, morals, and unselfish service. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Montague County Commission, do hereby recognize and congratulate Ms. Dorothy Jean Friend on her retirement and thank her for her longstanding commitment to serving the citizens of Montague County Commission and the state of West Virginia, adopted this 4th day of January 2023. Move that we approve the proclamation as presented?
Second. Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Would you like to come up and, we'll hand you the proclamation, take a picture?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Say free food?
Hey, Donna.
Sorry, I made a line.
I can't imagine.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, my gosh, thank you.
We're expecting 75 years from you now.
Okay.
And Donna, one thing I just found out in reading that proclamation.
Yes.
I didn't know that Jean's first name was Dorothy.
Yes.
That's my mother's name.
Is that right?
Yes.
I'm not sure that anybody's ever, I've never heard, whenever somebody called and asked to talk to Dorothy, we knew we're somewhere, didn't know her.
Did they just refer to it as Jean all the time?
Yes.
So, she didn't go by Dodd or Dottie or anything like that?
And Abe's name was actually Terrell. Yeah. I never knew that until like five, six years in. But thank you very much for this.
Thank you very much.
Give her terror today. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any? Good, we have no grants, we're almost done. Correspondence besides the, go ahead.
Okay. Hold on here. The only bit I got was a packet from Property Valuation and Procedures Commission. This is the proposed valuation budget for the assessor's office for fiscal year 2324. I don't, you guys don't approve it, it's done through the state, but I figured it would, we would note that we received it.
And I want to note that obviously, we got all these people come in and talk about the hockey rink. We received, I've got flooded yesterday with a ton of emails, haven't even had a chance to read them all, but I did want to acknowledge that we have received a lot of correspondence regarding this issue.
Yes, I just want to make it clear, go ahead.
Yeah, a lot is an understatement, so.
Well, I'm glad you guys got them, because I didn't get any, thankfully.
Dozens plus phone calls plus concerns and...
Texts.
Yeah, texts and can't even go to the store. Okay. No one finished business with the new business? Consider approval of the 2023 holiday schedule.
As you know, according to West Virginia State Code, there is a list of holidays that is included in state code that you all approve every year, and we send this out to the employees and the different offices, and we post these in the bulletin boards at the back entrance and the front entrance of the courthouse. It's, there's to note additional holidays or days off if so designated by the governor. That way, you don't have to necessarily have an emergency meeting to be able to close the buildings.
Correct. And the, the holidays essentially is the 10 of the 11 federal holidays, and then there's the Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And West Virginia Day.
Yes. And then, just to note, and we get this question a lot, especially as June starts to come into the calendar, about the Juneteenth holiday, we cannot put it on the holiday schedule until they actually put it in state code to add that as an official holiday. Okay, so...
I remember you mentioning that last year.
Yeah. So, if the governor decides later on in the year that he's going to add that, then obviously it would be, it would be honored, but until they actually change the state code to include that holiday in the state code, we cannot put it on the holiday schedule.
And it's also kind of hokey because of, with West Virginia Day being on the 20th and when, where West Virginia Day falls, sometimes that day's covered.
Right.
Anyhow, on a weekend, but this, this year, this 19th is a Monday.
Yeah.
The 20th is a Tuesday, so...
And a lot of the confusion is because some of the other state offices, when they put out their holiday schedule for the year, they include Juneteenth.
Right.
But we have to go by state code, so...
Move to approve the schedule as presented?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of setting scheduled dates for the 2023 Board of Review and Equalization.
So, we have a few dates that have already been set aside, and this notification will go into the newspaper. We have January 1st at 10:45, Jan, I'm sorry, not January, February 1st at 10:45, February 3rd, 11:30, February 8th, 10:45, February 10th, 11:30, February 15th at 1:30, and February 21st at 11:30. And right now, we don't have any, I don't think we have any appointments, no. So, those are when you, you'll actually have to open the Board of Review and adjourn if you don't have any appointments.
Move to approve the BRE dates as presented?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration approved, to approve requisition number 16 for the University Town Center Series 2020 Property Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $425, and that would be paid to Municap for their services in the district.
Move to approve requisition 16 as presented?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of approving appointment to the Mountain Line Transit Authority.
We had a, so the, the city appoints three individuals, the county appoints three individuals, and then we have one joint.
Right.
Appointment. This would be obviously one of the county appointments. Terry Cutwright, her appointment, she's been serving on the Transit Authority for quite some time. Her term ended at the end of December, so we have posted this on our website. It's been posted for about three weeks. We haven't had any other applicants. They're a very active board, so I would suggest that you guys go ahead and take that up at this time.
Move to approve the reappointment of Terry Cutwright to the Mountain Line Transit Authority as presented?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Do we have any other new business?
No, sir.
Just to verify, I see a couple other elected officials. Did anyone want to say anything or not? Okay, see now. Okay. Reports from county commissioners, Sean?
Obviously, it's been a slow week because of the holidays. I hope everybody had a great holiday break. Yesterday, I had my swearing-in ceremony. Judge Tucker did me the honor of swearing me in, so I, we want to thank Judge Tucker for, for doing me that honor. Today, the commission, actually, I wasn't able to participate in this call, but the other commissioners had a call, our regular monthly call with Green County, and today's a regular day. Tomorrow, there's, Morgantown Area Partnership has a legislative forum at 10 o'clock across the street. All municipal leaders, the county commission, and legislative leaders are asked to participate to really just talk about items that we want to, we as commissioners or municipal leaders would like to see in the next, next legislative session, and for legislators to share with us some of their ideas. Tomorrow night, I have my Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board meeting. Friday, we have staff reports. This pretty much rounds out the, my, my schedule for the next week. Do want to congratulate Commissioner Bloom. I know you'll continue to do a good job representing the commission as our president in next year. And I do want to, you know, the, everybody coming and talking to us about the Bow Park issue, it's always, there's a fine line between what we can do with directing or working with other municipalities, and we, we push that limit all the time, and we'll do the same as far as asking to be part of the solution. But we really, especially trying to, trying to get involved in a board of another municipality is really, I, I know that the levy issue is where there's the connection, and we'll certainly try to be part and try to facilitate the conversations to try to find a solution. But I do want to make it clear to city council members that, you know, it's never our intention to tell you what to do. We just want to work with you and, and help through, through these issues when they come up, and when there's issues that come up, that things we're doing and that affects the city, we hope that they come to us and tell us and have those conversations. So, I'm just looking forward to working with the city, Bow Park, to see how we can find solutions, and all these citizens to find out how we solutions. But I certainly don't want to give any pre, any notion that we're, we're going to direct because we don't, and, and that's where both sides shut down. If we start, when I came, today's the first meeting of my new term. When I came on to the commission six years ago, one of my pet peeves was the commission talking at the city and the city talking at the, at the commission, and we can't, we can't get back to that. We gotta, we gotta be part of the conversation, and I'll offer to be part of the conversation, and we'll offer to be part of the conversation. But, so anyhow, it's my two cents, we'll, we'll do what we can and see where we can go.
Just a couple of things. Like to thank all the elected officials that were in attendance today. That was fabulous. We had Delegate Staller, Delegate Warner, Delegate Girardelli, Senator Clemens, Circuit Clerk Hydock, Mayor Lewis, Judge Guzio, Magistrate Guzio and Magistrate Bain. That's, it was quite a, it was quite a gathering, and that's, that's great to see. I had a, an advisory committee meeting for the Camp Muffley last night, and I'd like to report that our new superintendent out there, Seth Hubbard, is doing a fabulous job. He really is organized and progressive and has a lot of things he's already implemented and will be implementing new throughout the year. We're looking forward this summer to movie nights at the pool, perhaps a couple of times, and perhaps an Easter egg thing with the Easter Bunny, and, and that was it. So, he's doing a great job, and I'd like to, to express my appreciation for that. Like to say, congratulations to Donna Hydock, our new circuit clerk, taking over this week. And I know she's already left, but I'm sure she, she'll do a great job. She's been there forever, and will continue in that vein. As far as the hockey thing, I've never, I've been on here two years, and I've never seen anything like it. We get calls and emails and phone and texts, but this reached a new level. And the passion and the, the care that's going into it and the organization and the, and just the overall way that it's come about has been very impressive. There's not been name-calling, and there's not been a lot of slander. It's just been, we've got a problem, we need to fix it, and this is why, and we don't know how, but we just want to be part of the solution. And that kind of echoes what Sean was saying. We, we always like to be part of the solution, and so any way that we can, we will help. We'll keep monitoring the situation, but it is a, a city levy and Bow Park levy, so we're limited, but we will certainly stick our, stick our two cents in where it's asked for and where it's warranted, so thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you. First, I appreciate the two of you willing to endure another year of my leadership. I promise I will continue to get better at making sure that, I always ask you all before I open up my mouth, so I'm, I'm getting, oh, look at that, look, she doesn't believe that, but I try and do that. But no, I think what the three of us have accomplished and what we're going to accomplish this year, tomorrow, I'm very nervous, tomorrow, I don't know if you know, but it's the day scheduled for the Olympic Trial Board Meeting to make that decision. We don't know. I, I hope that it's positive. If not, we're still going to work with them in the future, because I think we have so much going for us, and I think it's because the county commissioners put on a true front that we do work together real well. We like to have discussions, not always agree, but we do work together and we come across doing what is the best thing we can do for the citizens of Montague County. I'm a little bit torn. I mean, I want to give a quick historical perspective of what happened about the ice skating rink. Back in 2013, the county commission realized that we wanted to do a study, a feasibility study, of what do we really offer between WVU? No one ever talked to each other between the city, WVU, and the county. So, we all got together, we hired a company, they did a study, and then out of that study, not only was there a presentation, but then, I don't know if you know, but in the old room, we had about 65 citizens. We had a meeting, and we broke down into groups of what we can do with that study. And one of the groups that came out of it was this recreational study, and recreational group to go forward. And it really was pushed by the ice skating parents and the hockey parents. So, out of it came a proposal, and what we tried to do was put it in the first ward, these projects. It wasn't possible. So, we went to option two, which was the county would work with Mylan Park to build a swimming and track, and then the city promised to take care of it. This is back in 2014, the ice skating rink. Out of that came then the, the proposal for a levy, and then the city decided to put $400,000 of the levy would go into building this new ice skating rink. And that's really where we came from. The reason why it's really awkward, and I think Sean said it best, the word that I want to use is, it's really difficult for me, because I like to get involved in a lot of issues, but, but Sean is right. It is a city issue, and we have to navigate very carefully. I can't jump in on them to tell them what to do and then turn around and say, stay away from MUB in the county. And, and that's what people need to understand. So, we, it's a delicate line, to the point that I was even put up under a state ethics violation for getting this levy passed, and then it came out that when they investigated that there was absolutely nothing wrong, I could promote a levy and also support the recreational levy. So, where, where we're at right now is, I understand the passion and concern. What came out of the feasibility study is not what they're going to go through, and that's where the concern is. And hopefully, the city and these individuals can work out, as we said, we are more than willing to be a part of the discussion, but we are the outer part of the discussion. And I want that really clear. Hopefully, these residents can get with the city and Bow Park and work it out, and we will try and do whatever we can to be a part of that solution, but we want it clear, we cannot tell them we're getting specifically involved in that, and as much as I sometimes try and do that, I, this would be wrong. And, and I want it really clear that we will work with you, but we can't tell them what to do, and hopefully, we can come up with a solution that the county can best come up with. That's about the best. So, with that, I ask for motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We be adjourned.